This time we'll call the meeting to order. An indication?
Let's bring, Father God in heaven, we thank you for today and we thank you for this beautiful fall weather you've given us, God, and we pray for your spirit to guide these people as they make decisions to lead this community, God, and we just lift them up to you and pray that you bless them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? And a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve you of the second.
By Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hash to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you come to the podium, state your name and address, please speak respectfully, and limit your time to three minutes.
Two twenty-nine West First, I believe it is, that property has been condemned and I had time to either tear it down or to get it repaired. Since then, I've had several health problems. Some of you know, I broke my neck back the last of February. I had, was trying to get it healed after and I did not heal. I had to go through surgery and the surgery was on the sixth of July. I have been wearing this since then. I had to go through, I was in the hospital for a while in Topeka, then they sent me back here for a swing bed. I got out of the hospital there and I got a registered letter about it. Two days after I got out of the hospital, I think it was on Monday that we got a registered letter and so anyhow, I understand that you were going to get bids on tearing it down. So I didn't come before you, you asked for an extension on that. I have been talking to Bruno about what options I have at that this point and everything, and he says the only thing I would have is either go ahead and have it tore down and have me tear it down and put it on my ax rolls or else I would have to come to you and get an extension. But I have to do something right away because the board says that they have been, the commissioners say that they feel they have given me plenty of time to do that and I haven't done anything and I haven't been reporting back to the commission and I apologize for that. That has been my problem and I will apologize for not keeping you and Bruno more informed of what all is going on. I have put the place, I put a for sale sign in front of the place. I've had at least two different offers already that would go ahead and find a place and would take care of tearing it down and fixing it up. I'm saying he wanted to fix it up. Others said they'd tear it down. Another person has called showing interest. My grandson is here now and he has shown some interest in possibly thirty seconds doing something like putting in a trailer court or something there. So I would ask for a sixty to ninety day extension. While I go ahead and explore those avenues, at that point, I will guarantee you that there will be something done. You will see progress in either that house coming down or the property being sold and it will still be either coming down or being repaired. You'll see the progress.
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Moving on to proclamations, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation.
Yeah, I am going to approach and give you some information in a purple ribbon because that's the color of the month. And if you already have a card which you made, you just have that to share with somebody because likely, you know, you'll run into somebody at some point. You did, you did good. I had to put on a ribbon. Well, I'm Julie Gullaby. I've been with the D-VAC for almost eleven years this November. So, and I'm going to read our domestic violence awareness proclamation for October. I understand that the health department brought breast cancer awareness too, so we're going to bring awareness to everything. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread preventable public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansas, including Cloud County, and whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasure and tragically many are tarnished by one's person's feelings of entitlement to power and control over another resulting in violence and fear, and whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas the United States Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides compromise fourteen percent of all homicides, excuse me, in the United States and women are twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports thirty-two domestic violence homicides were eighteen point five percent of all homicides in Kansas in 2021. And whereas in Kansas in 2022, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every ten days, ten hours, seventeen minutes, and eleven seconds. And a domestic violence abuser committed a violent act, reported to law enforcement every twenty-three minutes and thirty-nine seconds, and law enforcement made arrests due to domestic violence every forty-six minutes and forty-three seconds. And whereas D-VAC served eight hundred thirty-one victims within our ten county area and four hundred eighty-six were from the Sweene County, but yet these numbers don't accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as many are continuing to struggle against isolation and other impacts such as COVID-19. And whereas, as a governing body in Cloud County recognizes violence as inconsistent with the county's values and cannot ignore, excuse, and tolerate, and whereas, in declaring this month of October as domestic violence awareness, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to summarize them with resources to recognize subtle signs and control tactics, to act as safe support system, to speak against perpetrators of violence, and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others, to prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time or resources to local domestic violence agency. And now therefore, we as the Cloud County Board of Commissioners do proclaim October as domestic violence awareness. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
So you have one for me? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the discussion agenda, this would be the police K-9 unit.
So when I took over as chief almost two years ago, one of the things that I wanted to add back to Concordia Police Department was the K-9 unit. And so I started doing some looking into and the cost and everything, and I found that our opioid grant could fund part of it and then that there was actually a grant that was already started by officers in the past that had a golf tournament. It was when Mark Henry passed away and it did the golf tournament and all those proceeds went into a fund. And the way I'm understanding, it was to support a K-9 unit. So I reached out to the Sheriff's Department, Nick Patterson, who's a K-9 handler there, and asking who they bought their dogs through, and it was a K-9 working dog out of northern part of Nebraska or Omaha up in that area. And by doing the research, he's like, hey, if you guys are very interested, we have several grant programs available that would help fund this K-9. So in the memo, I kind of laid that out, the grant fund. So the total grant funding would be twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in available grants, and the total project would be thirty-three thousand. Sorry, I just lost it. Yeah, nine thirty-six, fifty-seven. The one thing that I think is this would be addition to our department and would be a critical resource in enhancing the public safety and combating drug trafficking and protecting our officers. Being a former K-9 handler myself, this is a great tool to have in our toolbox to help not only drug enforcement, but apprehension and officer safety, clearing buildings. You get really close with these dogs as a handler and they are considered an officer of the department. There are so many things that you can do with K-9 and the training would consist of a two-week training class that would be a hundred and twenty hours, ten-hour days. That would start March third through the fourteenth of 2025 and we'd have to pay hotel costs on that. And then there would be additional training each week that I would require in type of an SOP that she would have to, or he or she would have to do one to two hours of training a week to keep the dog current on apprehension and drug enforcement. So what I'm proposing is to to go ahead with, to ask your permission to go ahead and seek out these grant funding to support the K-9 unit.
So the total amount that you would need?
So after the grant funding, after the grants out of pocket, we would probably be around the seven to eight thousand mark and we would use the opioid and the fund that's already set aside. So probably, whatever we decide, you know, a couple thousand out of the opioid and then the six thousand out of the existing K-9 fund.
So all funds are currently available?
That's correct.
Without additional?
Yes.
And you're pretty confident that you'll be able to get all of that?
Yeah, speaking with Dave, Dave is the lead, he's the owner of the K-9 Works, and they run anywhere from a hundred to two hundred, hundred to a hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, K-9 handlers through his program a year, and everyone has been successful in getting the grants. And he actually helps write the grants and does all the grant work for us. And we've already been awarded one grant if we proceed to move on this, and that's the K-9 Lead Grant seventy-two fifty.
When was the last time we had a K-9?
It was with Mark.
That was, that's been ten years ago?
It was, it was a four times, that's about at least seven, eight.
There would be some expense ongoing though for care of the dog?
That is correct. There'd be, you know, upkeep of the vet bills and the food, and I'm already working with a local business here on, if not donating, maybe getting the dog food at cost. There's been a lot of support in that area, so I'm pretty excited that we can keep the cost to down.
In the notes, it says that this would allow for sharing costs of ongoing training potentially with the county. What does that look like with?
So they're looking to get another K-9 as well, actually trying to get in this class as well. So there would be three K-9s in this area and they would do their weekly training together instead of going to outside and paying a venue to put on the training or whatever. Nick Patterson is actually a K-9 instructor, so all the training would be coming through him. So there would be no cost to us to pay for an instructor to keep our certifications up.
And, I mean, just for coverage in our area, do we need three K-9s in our area? Is there a benefit to three dogs? Just, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm sure that-
Yeah, so in the last two days, Officer Patterson has deployed his dog on two car stops within the last two days and recovered methamphetamines on both stops. So the drug world, they're getting a lot more smarter. They're hiding, concealing, and I believe that this is definitely a good tool to have in our toolbox to help us take the drugs off the street.
So do you have a handler chosen? And if there would happen to be turnover with whomever is chosen, then what happens with the dog?
Yes, so I do have one handler chosen right now, Emma Tifo. She has been the one selected. Just gauged on her interaction with dogs the way it is and her personal dogs how she keeps them up. And yes, if she would leave the department, we would send her a new handler and that same K-9 to a refresher course to get that handler used to the current K-9.
What's the cost of something like that?
I don't-
Under refresher?
I don't know what a refresher would cost. I would assume that it wouldn't be thirty-three thousand dollars, but-
Well, right.
I would assume that, you know, probably a couple thousand. I mean, that's totally guessing, but-
Yeah. What, do we have funds that we continually put into the K-9 fund? Like, because we already have an existing fund, is this something that's continually fed or unforeseen circumstances that would come up, or would that come out of the CIP fund or where, you know, where?
I don't know that we continually fed those funds. That was kind of a one-time deal to try to help raise money toward a K-9 to get one back on the force. We do have the DARE funds that are consistently fed by court fees that are, fines that are paid, and so since that's used for drug education and abuse, we could look into seeing if those could be used as well. But I'm not aware of any other funds, so Amber and Bren, if you're aware of it.
The only thing that may be able to be put back in those funds, and this is depending on the case, is if we do an asset forfeiture, but I don't want, I don't want to rely on asset forfeiture because we all know that's a big argument in the courts right now.
I guess just like the long-term and just like the potential, like, you know, if the dog would get injured and there's a lot of bills involved with that. I guess, is there dog insurance?
Oh, yeah.
K-9, yeah.
We have it.
And do we already have coverage, like, citywide or like under the police force? If somebody would sue us because of a dog incident, are we covered already? Or do we need to add that to our policy?
I would almost guess yes, and the only reason why is when I was with the insurance company, we had a few, it was just part of the policy. They're considered an officer. They're actually, not deputized, but whatever they are, deputized.
Their commission.
Their commission. They're actually an officer. So we actually covered, like, we had a couple of situations where a dog bit somebody. They don't sue the dog, they'll sue the officer because it was handling the dog, so it is covered. And then, I don't know if input insurance, I don't believe that, since they are considered an officer, if there'd be insurance for it. You can get animal insurance for sure.
Yeah, well, I guess, I mean, just, I would just want to make sure that whatever maybe covered is covered.
Yeah.
I can ask about that. I can tell you Midwest Public Risk is huge with the police officers and the whole department, and they put on constant training all the time. So I would kind of be surprised if they won't. We'll definitely ask.
I definitely see this as an asset, the law enforcement, and an asset to our community, I think, through a lot of our ongoing conversations is about working to make this community safe and continue to be a wonderful place to live. And so knowing that the benefit that a well-trained K-9 officer pair can bring to the community, I think that the costs associated with it upfront being covered and then very likely being able to fold any additional ongoing costs into the police department's budget makes sense to me.
And the good thing right now is I'm a former K-9 handler and Sergeant Adam Sorel was a former K-9 handler as well. We actually went to K-9 school together. So there's going to be a lot of resources there and tools available for Emma and the K-9 as well to, we all learn together, and be able to teach.
Does this dog live with somebody?
Yeah, the dog would actually stay with Officer Tifo, yes. And I've already asked and she's aware of that and prepared that if we move forward that she can take this home. And she said yes.
I have lots of questions. Really understand stuff, but I do think it would be a good resource. I would hope that whomever is the handler would stay for a long time because when you, you know, investing, regardless, we hope, because we want to keep our employees, but, you know, investing that in them, but it sounds like there's also some other people that could potentially take that on if that would ever happen.
Yeah, and I think this is just a great opportunity to add one more thing to the police department to keep our officers here too, because it's, you know, like DARE and SRO and K-9, you know, your younger officers have something to look forward to is, hey, maybe I'll be a K-9 handler someday, so I'm going to stick it out. Next thing you know, they're here twenty years. So it, I think it's great to have.
Although maybe we shouldn't give it to Officer Tifo and just have her-
I have a question. Brent, can they take the dog into the school?
Yes, yeah. So when I talked to David, I told him that I did not want a dog, since it is going to be dual purpose, I didn't want a dog that was very vicious because I wanted to be able to do school events or even public events. And he said that's not an issue at all, that a lot of agencies are asking for that. And also, we'll probably have it muzzled as well if we go into those events, so there's no risk of any type of biting.
I was thinking more about sniffing out drugs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And she would-
Not drugs.
Will they do that?
Not just a PR event.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes, we will, we'll be working directly with the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department now, right now, they currently are the ones that come in and do the sweeps of the school, so we'll actually get in, involved in that now.
Thank you.
Sorry, I misunderstood you.
Well, both things, but I was just thinking about drugs and like at the Plaza where we have had questionable people, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I would imagine that with community-oriented policing, that that would apply with this as well, where we want officers that are able to well engage with the community but also be able to respond when necessary. And so being able to, where both of those has.
Yes, absolutely.
I guess we're looking for your concurrence tonight to go to proceed with the grant applications, and if we're successful, then we can proceed with the-
I-
I absolutely think it's-
Yes.
A broad program.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Moving on to our action agenda, the minutes of the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
I had, I had a couple of things in it. The kids gave the preamble to the Constitution, not the Constitution, if I read the minutes right. And at the end of the minutes, it was the mayor pro tem rather than the mayor.
Just on the Constitution, we proclamation.
Said the fourth graders recited the Constitution.
Oh, so, yeah.
It's the preamble.
And so modification for the preamble to the Constitution, modification of the mayor pro tem read the proclamation, and then at the end for the executive-
Yeah.
Session, I would not be a part of that.
Right.
The other four would. For those three modifications or edits, what the most appropriate term would be?
No, hold this statement. No. I move to approve the September eighteen, twenty twenty-four minutes as amended.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. I would abstain. Wasn't here, not able to-
It's not necessary, but you can.
I know. Three still gets us the approval vote, right? It doesn't do anything?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to appropriation ordinance eighteen.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number eighteen.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve appropriation ordinance number eighteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to reports, managers' reports.
Several, thank you. Thank you for attending the groundbreaking last Friday for the subdivision, the new monitoring capacity project that went really well, was very well attended. A great fall fest this weekend, a lot of compliments that we heard even through Chamber Coffee yesterday morning. We continued the celebration into Monday, yesterday at the Frank Carlson Library in honor of the Governor Carlson Home Council signs that's gone up north and south of town. That project did finally come to fruition, and so that was a really very good celebration, good to hear from the Carlson family there. This next week, they'll be out of the office Thursday through Saturday at the League Annual Conference in Wichita. With the celebration and travel with them. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Other reports? Commissioner, what's?
Um, just recently, I noticed the lovely new sign that was a cooperative effort between the hospital and the college. It's amazing. If you haven't looked at it, go out and take a gander. It's very impressive and it's a great way to bring people into our community, in my opinion. On another note, I was reminded by a citizen that it's probably a good idea that everyone be mindful of how their pets are impacting their neighbors. And specifically, since we haven't had any rain, dog deposits and such can get to be stinky. So it's a good idea to try to clean up after your pet.
So it's a good idea to try to clean up after your pet, even if it's in your own yard.
Marsha?
Well, I'm sorry I missed the groundbreaking and Fall Fest. It looks like it was a good event, both of them. I wonder, wondered why or how long it will take the county attorney to sign the papers for the car, the cars.
For the impounds?
Right, for the impounds.
So, Marsha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so Chief Darren has talked to me. I did talk to Rob yesterday, asked him to take a look at that. My understanding is he just needs to sign them and they may have been sitting on his desk for a while. He was going to follow up with me. I will call his office tomorrow, if I get a chance, if not on Friday, and see how long. I'll even volunteer to go get them. So hopefully sooner than later.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, the only comments I have would really be just to echo those that have been stated. There's, the weekend was really just great. Fall Fest is really what made me, one of the things that made me fall in love with Concordia, coming back to visit with my wife's family. This, the, the small town feel in the community and to think how much has been done in the last fifteen, twenty years. But being able to be a part of the groundbreaking for new housing, being able to, the statue reveal, the apartments and all the work that was done there. Fall Fest, walking around downtown, a safe downtown, an enjoyable one where there's a lot of activities to choose from. It just, it's a pretty great community. And I think, you know, certainly as we see a lot of the, the heartache that other parts of the country are experiencing now and other parts of the world, it's just really feel very fortunate to continue to call Concordia home and continue to see all the work that you all do to help make this the community it is. So appreciate it. It's a great place to be right now. This time I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Haste to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.